Thank you, everyone, for joining us for this, the Wednesday, October 9th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As we always do again, we will first stand and say a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Turn my mic on, that always hope helps. Couple of brief statements to begin this. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, the public has the right to hear everything that is being said and to view all of the exhibits that are presented. Please notify the chairperson if you are unable to see or hear the proceedings. The board works from a prepared agenda, which is now in a new format, which will take me a moment to get used to, and it will take up tonight's items in the following order. We will, as we recall the roll, we will review the miscellaneous appeal notice for Appeal 2761 that was taken up at last month's meeting. We will then take up two new appeals. Appeal 2763, limited reduction of yard side residential appeal by Garrison Consulting on behalf of Joan Leveki. Great. Fifty-six Two-Rod Road Assessors Map, or fifty-seven, blah, blah, blah. And then the second one, Appeal 2764, also a limited direction of yard size residential appeal, is by Tyler Sueforth at Ten Welch Drive. Terrific. With that, Doreen, could you call the roll? Just in time.
Yeah.
Just in time. Doreen, if you could call the roll.
Christine Snow. Present. Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
David Boer.
Here.
Peter Filinga.
Here.
Richard Silkman.
Here.
Let's see, we, Joe Doherty, who is our second alternate, is unable to attend tonight. That's fine, we have a full quorum present, and Kyle will be acting his alternate role for tonight's performance. I don't know why I said that. So the first item that we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I was not here last week, last month, so I will not be voting on this one, but if I could have a motion, unless there's discussion, I could have a motion to approve.
Will four be enough to approve this? Does I wasn't here either?
You guys can still approve the minutes if you didn't, if you reviewed.
I'd prefer not to.
Okay, I have motion to approve.
Thanks.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any discussion? If we could see a vote for, or show of hands for that, for the four members, vote that is unanimous. Thank you. Then we'll go right into the agenda. This is, again, I was not here for this one, but I will, we now have a final, final order for Appeal 2761. Do we have any discussion, or do we have a motion to approve the order as written?
I move we appealed, approve the order as written.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any discussion? And again, I will not be voting on this, as I did not hear it.
Normal, aye.
Okay, could, I see a show, actually, we'll call the roll on the approval of this one. Doreen?
Christine Snow.
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson.
Yes.
Richard Silkman.
Yes.
And Kyle Levene.
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, now our new business for the evening, we'll start with 2763, limited reduction of yard side appeal by Garrison Consulting on behalf of Joan Leveki at Fifty-Six Two-Rod Road. Went right to the right place, didn't need to be asked, thank you very much. And we'll have you go for, just give us a general view of what the appellant's looking for, and then we'll go through the formal process once we hear you.
Yep, appreciate that. Again, thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Matthew Winch, here on, from Garrison Consulting, here on behalf of Joanne Leveki, the applicant, also joining Joanne this evening, her daughter Maria, and her son-in-law Mike. The project itself, just a quick overview, the genesis of why we're here this evening for this appeal. Mike and Maria live just down the road, off of Two-Rod Road. Joanne obviously lives here in this residence, and they're looking to consolidate both households into one residence. And that's in an effort to help Joanne, as she ages in life, as well as to consolidate two households that are now no longer housing children, who are in college. So I just wanted to give that quick backdrop as an explanation as to why we're here this evening. I have a few slides to share with you that just runs through what you've already got in front of you from the standpoint of the application itself. Those slides are organized in a way that'll just run through the existing site plan, some past improvements, just to give a little quick overview of the history, proposed site plan, and enlarged site detail as to the areas that we're looking at for some setback relief, a few elevations, an alternate scheme that was looked at early on in the process of laying out and designing the property, and then some questions from the board as and if appropriate. So the layout itself, the existing site plan, we had a survey done last spring. Steve Martin, professional land surveyor, completed that work for us, established the perimeter property lines, as well as the setbacks indicated for us. And at that time, we became aware that it was going to be a tight fit along the side of the property where we want to add not only a third garage bay for the three individuals for parking their cars inside a garage, but also the addition itself that would run down the side of this more southerly property line. In looking at a variety of schemes, it was seen as the best option to move forward was to move forward with a development that tried to tuck this addition on that side, and to get a, to get a proper-sized garage bay in there was challenging. We even reduced it a little bit, as much as we thought we could for a reasonable one-bay garage bay, and that led us to coming up with the scheme that we've presented to you tonight. Just quickly taking a step back, the original house was built in the late 60s, early 70s. It was a ranch structure then, it is still today, had one, a one-bay car garage. This plan that you see here, that we found from some old town records, shows a beauty salon that was put in the existing garage in the 1970s. That has since been removed, bagged with some later improvements, but this is the original footprint of the building, and the front of the building even clips what's part of the front yard setback today, which we'll touch on in a little bit. Along those improvements, we also, in the mid-1990s, late 90s, there was a second garage bay added. This post-dates some of the exceptions within the town ordinances for construction prior to 1990, but it's significant because it was, in addition, on that southerly side, heading towards that side yard setback. That work was completed in either 1999 or early 2000. What we're looking to accomplish here is, there are three impacted areas. Specifically, it's, it really could be distilled down to two, but I've identified it in three separate graphics here on this close-up of the site. We have the front yard setback exception that we're looking for approval on, which shows an extension of an existing deck and stairway that currently encroach into the setback. We're just looking to pull that, if you will, down the side of the existing residence, and I would actually be pulling it towards a reduction, the setback line of the property, and the house is not parallel to the front yard setback or the side yard setback. So the further we actually pull the deck down, down the property, the less the impact into the setback is. But where we are here at this point, we are looking at a pretty modest six-inch or so impact at the corner of the deck, and then a more significant, but existing, impact of about two-foot-ten inches for the stairway to come down into the setback itself in the front, front yard. Along the side yard, as you can see, as I mentioned a few seconds ago, the, the house isn't parallel to any property lines. It's not obviously parallel to the side yard setback. As you can see, with the, with the 15-foot setback shown in the red dotted line, it impacts a tiny corner of the front of the garage, and then as we get to the rear of the addition, that, that impact grows a little bit, from about two-foot-six inches, I'm trying to read my small text here, apologies for not remembering it off the top of my head, to about a four-foot-eight-inch distance. And I will note that that, that these distances are also to the drip line of the overhang of the roof, not to the face of the structure. So we are including the drip line in our application for setback relief, and the, the overhang itself is about a one-foot-to-fourteen-inch overhang, which is something that we're duplicating from the existing house. The existing house has some pretty strong overhangs around the existing ranch structure, and we want to duplicate that in portions of this addition, which we've noted here on the application. Some of the existing, proposed elevations, you can see here, we've got the rear and the front yard elevations shown here, showing what this proposed addition would look like, and it also starts to give you a sense of how this property also slopes front to back. As you can see along the backside, there is a reduction in grade that we're trying to also mitigate with the property line to the southerly side as it comes up to the addition as we come down around the backside to try and get a full-size entryway into the rear of the addition for easier basement access to the addition side. We're also looking at, as you can see here in the, in the images, the overhangs of the proposed elevations begin to mimic those of the existing structure as well. Can also show you a few elevations of the side as well. Little bit more subdued from the side elevations than the rear and the front, but you can again see how, as we move front to back on this southerly elevation, how the site starts to slope down in a way to tie into the existing grades further down the house. That's important to note here, because when we talk about the existing scheme, alternate schemes in a second, some of what we explored would start to add some additional costs, as well as struggles, as how we resolved this grade change, if we tried to come up with a solution different than what we've presented as our ideal solution here. And here is just a quick concept study that, that I had done for the client to show, you know, here's a scheme, here's an option that begins to talk about layouts that would work within some of the setbacks, and that was to create an extension of a paved driveway that's coming around the side of the house that would be removed in our applied-for preferred scheme, because there would be a new garage structure there. And to get a oddly-placed garage off the side of the house that works inside the setback, we also have to place it behind the house in a way that separates it from, obviously, the other two existing garage bays, but it's also now between a mudroom, bathroom, and laundry room area that really kind of broke the house up, it didn't really create the feeling that they wanted to have of being able to share some spaces together, but while also having some separation of space when they wanted it on occasions. And it also would drive us to have to place retaining walls on the side of the property, as well as towards the rear of the driveway, and then potentially steps down to get to the rear of the house from, from this added garage being placed, like I said, in an odd spot behind the house. The existing mudroom, laundry room, and those other spaces on the back of the house sit in a full foundation, full-depth basement foundation, and we didn't want to have to backfill an existing foundation to try and somehow put a garage bay at 90 degrees to the existing garage bay facing, facing the street with this side entrance coming around the corner of the house. And it also seemed a lot more unsightly to the abutter, because it was going to bring a driveway, a retaining wall, and other features right up to the edge of their property line, which they're entitled to do, but it just seemed the opposite direction of where we wanted to head to, in the, in the sense of trying to achieve something that was pleasant to look at and not kind of overbearing, if you will. And then the other aspect of this scheme, when we discussed it, is it also would consume the existing bulkhead down into the existing basement, which they still want to maintain. So we pivoted away from this to arrive at the scheme that we submitted to you today, feeling that the impacts were modest enough, that it was something we thought was worthwhile discussing with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'll just add that we also did look at adding the garage bay on the other side of the house, and it's the only other spot it can go, right? And it was really a non-starter as well, because at that point, now you're really, you know, creating, how are we going to create the second, second access point coming across the front yard? Are we going to be able to apply for two driveway openings to come into a single property? It seemed more complicated and confusing than it was worth to try and explore something on the opposite side of the house, where we do have a much larger side yard setback, but one that wasn't going to help us achieve the overall goal of adding a additional garage bay, as well as the bedroom, living room spaces that we're also adding off the back of the house. So with that, I will leave it to you with any questions that you might have.
Open up to the, to the board here for general questions, before we start going through the findings of fact? No general questions? That's pretty good, okay. Terrific, then. We will, seems fairly straightforward. Thank you very much for the presentation, the materials are very helpful. We will go through here and, let's see, we'll just have you read in your responses, oh, we still need to, sorry.
Forgot about that.
We'll have you read in your responses to the, to the, to the application. I noted too, that on item C3, you hadn't filled in the information on the physical features a lot, but the materials go through a pretty thorough explanation of this. So if you just give us some verbiage that we could insert in there for items, for that when we come to it, just as a heads up. I, I think you've more than addressed the, the item in your materials, it's just that particular paragraph wasn't included in the application. So, so first, generally describe the project and why a limited reduction of yard size is needed.
Just scrolling to, so C, C point one?
Yeah.
Yep. The original home.
Or, actually, A.
Yeah, note A, I got to get back to it. There we go, sorry. The project will include a third garage bay and additional living space off the rear of the house. The placement of the garage was studied in two other locations, but it did not work either functionally or due to the slope nature of the property. Architectural plans are included and also show the setback impacts along with the submitted site plan. As drawn, the addition will impact both the front yard and side yard setbacks. Exact impacts are listed below.
Great. And if you could just read those off, then.
Yep. B lists the exact dimensional reduction requested, front yard impact. The existing front porch steps in a portion of the garage bays presently sit in the front yard setback. These impacts all date to the original construction of the residence in the early 1970s. Current plans extend that front porch along the front yard setback and would impact about two-foot-ten inches of that required front yard setback depth. This is primarily to allow the front steps to be rebuilt, more or less, in their original place. Side yard impact along southerly side yard is where the main addition is placed. The existing building is not perpendicular to the front and side yard property lines. As a result, this addition would impact four-foot-nine inches of the side yard at its maximum point. This amount reduces as the addition nears the front of the property, as shown on the site plan.
Great. Perfect, okay, and then we'll then go into the, the demonstrated findings. First one, the existing buildings are structured on a lot for which the limited reduction of yard size residential is requested, were erected prior to July 3rd of 1991, where the lot is a vacant, non-conforming lot of record.
As noted, the original home was constructed prior to 7/3 1991, however, the, there was an addition added in 1999 slash 2000.
I have a question for Brian on that one. Does the addition have any impact on the consideration of this item?
My read, my read on the, on the legal basis of the appeal is that this appeal can be for the expansion or enlargement of an existing building or structure, and it says, "The existing buildings or structures on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size residential is requested were erected prior to July 3rd, 1991." It does not differentiate between the existing structure and any, any subsequent additions.
Got it.
So my read is, I think it's up to the board, but I believe that it qualifies for this type of appeal based on the existing original structure. I think it's a, a point of, of discussion as to whether or not the addition to the house has in some way made this request necessary, but I also believe that in this case, the applicant has done a good job of explaining other things that they considered.
Yep.
Besides that.
No, no.
It's really kind of up to the board to have that discussion.
And it says much a general question as well.
Yeah, yeah.
At what point does a post-91 change to the structure make this a post-91 consideration, as opposed to a pre-91 grandfathering? So, Dan.
So if I understand, the, the addition that was placed here in approximately 1999 or 2000 was the expansion of the garage, the original garage, which was a one-bay to a two-bay, is that correct?
Correct, it added a second bay.
It wasn't in here specifically at this point, so I want to make sure that's what we're talking about.
Nineteen ninety-nine, they added a second garage bay.
So with, with that expansion, the way it currently exists right now, not what you're asking for, is that within the setbacks allowed?
Yes.
Okay, I think that, that really answers our point.
Got it.
So it's, it's conforming, as it, as it is. So what he's asking for is a variance for the addition only.
Right, yeah. Yep. And general questions, we can hold for our discussion, but if we have questions now, feel free to ask them, just, we'll, we'll go through, but, but with that in mind, number two, C2, the requested reduction is reasonably necessary to prevent the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other properties are utilized in the zoning district, which is, this is R2, correct? Brian, thank you.
The response was, "This residence is being expanded to afford more space to the occupants to create a formal master bedroom en suite, add a garage bay, and a small bedroom."
Got it. Again, this is the one that wasn't answered, but if you could just let us summarize some of your other comments. "Due to the physical features of the lot and/or the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirement."
That is correct. Based on alternate studies that we looked at, both placing the garage on the northerly side of the property seemed impractical, and trying to create a garage space behind the house also seemed very impractical because of the site conditions that we have.
Good, great. "The impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses of the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or a structure which conforms to the yard size requirement."
Looking at new and existing construction in the Scotto Hill neighborhood, the proposed addition is consistent in size and use to many others. A five-bedroom house with a living room and a family room and a home office is not inconsistent with most of, if not all, new construction in this area and several existing homes in the vicinity.
Gotcha. David?
Question. Do you have photos to be able to document this? Or some kind of information about the neighborhood to show that there are other homes with three-bay garages and five bedrooms?
Contextually, yes, but physical documentation, no, because we weren't asked to provide any. And I'm just referring to some of the newer construction coming up Scotto Hill Road to the intersection with Two-Rod Road, which are some significantly large residences, some of which do have three-car garages, some of which are 5,000 square feet in size, and all in the same zoning area.
Okay, Brian, can you confirm that? Well, yeah, I absolutely can confirm it. I'm a little confused by your question. I mean, a three-car garage is not uncommon in any of the residential districts. Adding an additional bunch of living space that ends up equalling 3,700 square feet, some, something like that, that's not uncommon in the R2 zone?
In, in this particular neighborhood, that's common.
Yeah, definitely on Scotto Hill.
Good, that's why, yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. I think now you can have a seat, we're in good shape.
We've got number five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. "The applicant has not commenced construction of the enlargement, expansion, building, or structure for which the limited reduction in yard size is requested, so the Board of Appeals is not considering an after-the-fact application."
Correct, construction has not started.
That's what I thought, okay. Brian, did we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Gotcha. And is there anyone from the public here to speak on this appeal? Then, okay, the public portion of this is closed, and we can enter into our more discussions. Does anyone have any general comment, or do you just want to dive into, into the findings? Richard?
Excuse me, I just have one question about this issue, about vintage-ing on the date. Have we ever had a situation where somebody's asked us for a variance on a property that had been remodeled post-1991? And have we ever ruled on that, Brian, in any way, one way or another?
Yeah, I can't tell you, I can't remember which property, but we've run into that at least a couple of times in my time here.
And, and the general approach has been to consider the original structure?
The general approach, yeah, if the original structure was there and had not been removed and totally rebuilt.
Sure.
Then it was, it was considered eligible. That was the read that we've gotten from the attorney. I think to the point or the question that David asked about, was the addition that was added in nineteen, in 2000, did that, did that make it non-conforming? Or in other words, did that, did that push it right to the setback line or beyond, is is a valid question? Because if they did that and then came back and wanted to add on again, but in this case, it stopped short of the, of the setback line, and, and then just to get a reasonable one-bay garage, you know, you could, you could bat that around and say, does it have to be 14 feet? Could it be 12 feet? You know, I think, again, you have to put it in the context of how much of a, of a relief are they asking for, and is it reasonable?
Sure.
Any questions on this one, or comments, or?
Just an overall comment. This is well within our scope of responsibility and, you know, and right to grant, because it's on a side setback, it's less than five feet, on a front setback, it's less than 10 feet.
Yep.
So I just want to make that general comment.
Yep. Okay, should we, should we take a vote then on whether we feel the applicant's met the requirements for, for this settlement?
So we have to do each individual?
It's been so long since I've been sitting in this chair.
We have to go through each individual.
I think it was three months with absences, so, yeah, yeah, it's been a while. Okay, we'll go through one, one by one. And actually, that brings me back to my memories of being a child on this committee. David, maybe you could take us through the next one.
All right, so, findings of fact.
Yep.
Thank you very much for reminding me. Okay, number one, the existing building, buildings or structures on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested were erected prior to July 3rd, 1991, or is with, or is a vacant, non-conforming lot of record. lot of record? So first of all, I'd say the original existing dwelling was built in 1969, so that's prior to the zoning going into effect, according to the assessors' records. And also, there was a 14-foot garage addition in 2000, which was extended to the closest point of the garage to 25.4 feet from the property line according to the plans on file.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Nope? Okay. Now, do we take the vote? That's what I thought. By a show of hands, do we feel that the appellant has met the requirements for this item? That's unanimous. Michelle, if you could take us on number two?
The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district. This is a residence. It's being used as a residence. They just want to expand it to have more space and create a master bedroom with a garage, some more, just more space for family. I appreciate, I just want to add to, that presentation was very thorough. So it's very uncommon that we don't have extra questions for the appellant. Just wanted to say thank you.
Any other comments or thoughts?
Mr. Chair, I would just add, as I was drafting up findings, the applicant put on his site plan the gross lot area and the amount of area that the new structure would, would take up. And if you took the gross lot area and took 20% of that, they'd actually be eligible for 9,600 square feet of building. So this is quite a lot less than what they could have actually asked for. So I think that's just worth a consideration.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further comment, do we feel that the appellant has met the requirements for this item? Can I see a show of hands? That is unanimous. Thank you. I'll take number three, because this one's kind of a fun one. Due to the physical features of the lot and/or the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements. First of all, I would love to meet Carl Wybe from March 1965, who thought that this particular shape of property would be adequate for the needs of people living in the town going forward. That's fascinating. Given the very strange nature of the lot lines, which, none of which seem parallel to one another, they all seem kind of off, and given, I think, what I'm glad the appellant brought up as alternative structures, including, do we look to the north, or do we look to kind of winding down the hill, which is both a hill issue, a drainage issue, et cetera, I think they've chosen what is clearly probably the only practical way of adding a third bay to the, to this structure. And again, we, to echo Michelle, we appreciate the fact that you do have documented those alternative structures for us to understand the thought process going into it. So, thank you. Any other questions from the board on this one?
I was just going to make a comment on it, because we usually, this is the one we get all hung up on, or me.
Yeah.
And you were able to show us that there, you know, the reasoning behind it and the practicality of what the plan is. And I agree with the plan that you have laid out.
Yeah. And again, normally, we would love to see the paragraph written out there, but the amount of material that you gave with the alternatives diagrams is well in excess of what we've often seen in the past. So thank you very much for that. Do we feel the appellant has met the requirements of this item? Can I see a show of hands? That's unanimous. Number four, Christine.
The impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement. We had a lot of testimony from the applicant that it fits in with the size and uses in the neighborhood and is not out of proportion to what's going on in the neighborhood. A 3,000-square-foot house is pretty modest today, unfortunately, but it is. And so I don't see it having negative effects.
Certainly. I would certainly agree with that, and I'd also add, you know, there's been a number of new developments in the last 10 years over in that section of Scotto Hill Road, and individual properties have been put in of enormous size relative to this one. So I'd echo what Brian mentioned earlier, where I think this neighborhood is clearly accepting of quite large footprints, three-car garages, four-car garages, three-story houses. So, yeah, I think this has been, I think this looks fine for the neighborhood. So, any other comments from my board members? If not, do we feel the appellant has met the needs, the requirements of this item? Show of hands, please. Yes, that is unanimous. And last but not least, Kyle, item five.
This criteria asks whether the applicant has not commenced construction of the enlargement, expansion, building, or structure for which the limited reduction in yard size is requested, so that the Board of Appeals is not considering an after-the-fact application. The applicant has stated that construction has not started, and so I think that this criteria has been met.
Any other discussion or questions? No? Now, can I see a show of hands that this has been met? Unanimous. Thank you very much. And then, do we have a motion to approve the findings of fact? Yes, sir. So moved. Thank you.
Second?
Moved, David, second, from Christine. Any further discussion? If not, Doreen, call a roll, and we'll have the official vote.
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Yes.
David Bort?
Yes.
Peter Finley?
Yes.
And Richard Silkman?
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you very much. The appeal is approved.
Can I ask, just now that you've approved it, and thank you very much, can I ask one point of clarification?
Sure.
How long before building permit can be applied for?
You can apply for the building permit yesterday.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm.
I couldn't issue it till tomorrow.
That's, thank you.
Gotcha. Okay. Moving on to appeal number 2764, another limited reduction of yard size residential appealed by Tyler J. Sweetforth of 10 Welch Drive.
Before we get, do I actually need to make that?
I think we should for the, for the record, yeah.
Just for the board and any audience members, I do know the appellant and his partner personally. There is nothing for me to monetarily gain or lose by voting, but today, but we do have a quorum, so if you want me to not vote on this, I'm happy to step down for this.
No, in a town like Scarborough?
I am not in a butter.
Yeah. Again, as long as you're not in a butter and you're not, you don't have a direct interest in the property, we're a small town, we're going to know one another from time to time as these come up, so.
The only thing I'd suggest is the whole board concurs with that.
Yeah, no, I saw some nods, but do we want to take a formal vote, or are we comfortable kind of agreeing informally that we did before?
I don't think we need a formal vote.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either, so. Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. I will then turn it over to, are you Tyler?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good time this evening. So the, I don't have a fancy presentation or anything, but I think you guys should all have the appropriate materials for review this evening. So the request is for an application for a limited reduction of yard size. So I reside at 10 Welch Drive in Scarborough, Maine, a single-family Cape built in 1955. So the proposed addition would be to accommodate a growing family and add a master bedroom with a master bathroom and a working office to support a work-from-home requirement for my partner. So I guess I can just kind of go through the document and explain the project a bit. Oh, perfect, you have the land survey up here. So we did get a professional survey done. So you can see the existing property with the proposed addition kind of highlighted in pink there. So it is set back off-center a bit from the existing property, and that's to be able to meet the 30-foot front setback and a 15-foot side setback. So the project itself is a 14-by-26 addition, about just under 15 feet high, so a single-story, to an existing single-family home, as I said, located at 10 Welch Drive in Scarborough. So the limited reduction of yard size is needed due to the existing structure, again, built in 1955, not meeting current setback requirements. So it, we did work with the land surveyor and a builder, South Sea Construction, to look at alternative options if we built off the back, but the back part of the house is dormered, there's a bulkhead back there. If we built on the opposite side of the property, oh, perfect, you have the plans, the opposite side of the property has a mudroom and a kitchen and a dining room, so not really an ideal location to build a new master bedroom on that side of the house. So after working with the land surveyor and South Sea Construction, the proposal in front of you today, we all felt was the most practical and reasonable solution. So in terms of the dimensional reduction requested, it's 30.1 feet to the front boundary line and 10.2 feet to the side boundary line. And again, you can see all that in the survey as it's mapped out. So the existing structure, as I mentioned, single-family home built in 1955, so the current front corner of the house doesn't meet the 40-foot setback as it currently So regarding the physical features of the lot and the location of the existing structure, the reason it would not be practical to build within the current setback requirements is that, again, it was built in 1955 and does not meet the current 40-foot setback requirement. And in driving the neighborhood, there are plenty of other Cape family homes in that area that do have similar additions to what we're proposing here, so it does fit within the feel and look of the neighborhood, so there's nothing out of the ordinary with this particular request.
I just wanted to clarify on this one on the front setback. The existing setback, or the existing setback is 23, 29.3, 29.3 feet or 29 feet 3 inches, I guess. It's one of the two. 29.3, okay. And what you're looking for on the addition would be, it looks like 30.1?
Correct.
So you're actually not adding to the existing nonconformity?
Exactly. Yep, that's right. Yep, and that's why, if you see in the land survey, that's why it's set back from that front-left portion of the house there. So that's to, yes, we wouldn't infringe on the current setback, it would actually be a little bit less than the current corner of that house.
So the infringement, or the, effectively, the new setback variance is really the side setback moving down to 10.2 feet?
That would be correct.
Got it, okay. Got it. Okay. Any general questions from, from the team?
You may have said it, and I was looking at this. Did you consider putting it directly in the back, and would that have put it into conformity, or would that have not put it into conformity?
We did explore adding to the back, but in discussing with the builder and the land surveyor, that's where the existing bulkhead is with access to the basement and then that part of the house. There's actually a weird feature to the house, where there's a balcony built off the entire back portion of the house on the second level, so that would impede as well. And then the, that part of the house is dormered as well.
Yes, David?
I don't see anything in here about lot coverage percents of existing compared to what you're asking for and whether or not that would be in compliance. Brian, can you help on this one?
Yeah, I did the math. You're well under, you're well under this one. Thank you.
Anything from you guys? We will then go through like we did on the last one, and we'll just read through your responses to the, the items to be demonstrated. We'll start with number one, the existing buildings or structures on a lot for which the limited reduction of yard size residential is requested were erected prior to July 3rd, 1991, or the lot is a vacant, non-conforming lot of record.
Yes, that is correct. The existing single-family home was built in 1955.
Great. The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district.
Yes, the requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit myself as well as my growing family to use and enjoy the property in the same manner as other similar properties in the zoning district. There are several other homes within the neighborhood with similar additions to traditional-style Cape homes.
Due to the physical major, physical features of the lot and/or the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
After consulting with and reviewing several different options with a building contractor, South Sea Construction, as well as a land surveyor, main boundary consultants, the proposed addition requiring the yard size reduction is the most reasonable and practical solution based on the existing single-family home structure relative to the boundary lines. This is in large part due to the fact that the existing single-family home was built in '95 and does not meet the current front yard setback requirement of 40 feet.
The impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or a structure which conforms to the yard size requirement.
Correct. The impact of the proposed addition will not substantially differ than other homes in the neighborhood. There are several other Cape-style homes in the neighborhood with similar single-story additions.
Great. And finally, the applicant has not commenced construction of the enlargement, expansion, building, or structure for which the limited reduction in yard size is requested, so the Board of Appeals is not considering an after-the-fact application.
Yep, that is correct. Construction has not commenced.
Terrific. Okay. Nothing else than, Brian, are there any public comments or public?
No, no, no comments came in. I think I answered a phone call from a neighbor in a butter. Actually, I stand corrected, that was for the last one, was a phone call, but no written comments came in.
Okay, gotcha. And is anyone here to make public comments tonight? It does not look like it. So with that, I'll close the public comment section of this appeal, and we'll go down the list as we just did. Anything, any general comments to start things off before we run through? Okay. Richard, you want to take number one?
The existing buildings and structures of the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size residential is requested were erected prior to July 3rd, 1991, where the lot is a vacant, non-conforming lot of record. Well, the house was built in 1955, so this criteria is clearly met.
Yep, agreed. Any other thoughts on that one? Pretty straightforward, because you showed hands that the applicant has met this requirement. Yes, that's unanimous. The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district. This is, this is R2, right? Yeah. We've seen a number of these in various forms in terms of oddly-shaped lots that have an addition, a porch, a corner that ends up squeezing out into what was an oddly-shaped lot in, that was plotted out in the 1950s. So I'm willing to bet that within this neighborhood, we've probably reviewed other similar claims in the past. So I think, given the zoning district, given the thoughtful approach to the design, and also given the fact that they've, that they're, they're not continuing to impinge on the front setback indicates to my mind that they've met the requirements for this. So, any other comments? Do we agree that this has been met? Show of hands. That's unanimous. David, number three.
Number three. Thank you. Number three, due to the physical features of the lot and/or the location of the existing structures on the lot, the practical, it's practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement of the new structure in conformance with current applicable yard size requirements. The parcel is located on a cul-de-sac, sits the curvature on there, and it's a very oddly-shaped lot as you pull it out. And it's, this makes it very difficult to do anything on here without asking for some kind of relief on a setback. The driveway is also located on the easterly side of the dwelling. It does not create a desirable location for bedroom expansion. An existing dwelling is non-conforming, it does not meet the required forty-foot setback that was established years after the dwelling was built.
Okay. Any other discussions on this one? Can I see a show of hands that the applicant has met the requirements they have? And then finally, or, no, finally, Michelle, number four.
The impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from the, from or greater than the impacts and effects of the building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement. So, the addition is not going to be substantially different from this neighborhood, or most neighborhoods in Scarborough. There is a little location map here, as you can see, there's several similar Cape-style homes, and an addition is not unreasonable in this case.
Any other discussion? Do we agree this item has been met by the appellant? Show of hands, please. Yes, and then finally, Christine, number five.
The appellant has not commenced construction or enlargement, and that's true, the appellant has not commenced construction on this addition.
We agree, show of hand, please. That is unanimous. Then, with that discussion being complete, do I have a motion to approve the appeal, number twenty-seven sixty-four? Christine.
I'd like to approve this petition.
Okay, so moved, do I have a second? Richard is second. Any further discussion? No, seeing none. Could we have a call or roll to, to approve the appeal?
Christine Snow?
I.
Michelle Stevenson?
Yes.
David Bort?
Yes.
Peter Finley?
Yes.
And Richard Silkman?
Yes.
The appeal, number twenty-seven sixty-four, is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, thanks.
Two thoughtfully done applications tonight, actually, really well done, so. Do we have any comments? I have one quick question, comment, maybe for Doreen. At the Long Range Planning Committee last month, I guess there is a new set of term limits that has been approved by the, the nominations committee or by the town council for, for these? Do we, are we impacted by those coming up?
I know nothing about it.
Got it, okay. Maybe if I could ask Doreen?
I think you're wishful thinking, you want to, you want to be impacted, is that the issue?
As the person who's been here longest, I'd like to know.
Well, yeah, exactly, so we're actually losing two members of the Long Range Planning Committee because they have been, they have served three consecutive terms, and they can't, they have to take at least a one-year break.
Do you know if that?
And I just don't know if we're-
Do you know if that only pertained to the Long Range?
No, we were told it pertained to all, all committees.
I think that's what he's asking you.
In fact, and in fact, a number of committees have this problem, right? Shellfish and marine resources are the other ones that came up. So, if we could just do a check on that?
For next time, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Remember, the next time will be, or, we will have three new town council members in November, and they'll shuffle the subcommittee appointments they have, so getting a new zoning board member approved may take longer than you, than usual, not just the normal recruiting, but they also have that process going on. And remember that you, even with this new rule, you're asked to serve until you're replaced. So, so even if you've been serving for twelve years at this point, if they can't find someone to replace you, you're stuck. So, okay, if we could just look into that, that would be fantastic.
Can you be, if you've done three terms and you still want to serve, can you just go to another committee?
Sure. Yeah, oh, yeah, it's just for that committee.
Interesting.
And then next year, if, once you take a year off, you could reapply, if they still had an application, an opening or whatever, you could potentially be reappointed.
Because I feel like some of us would be, if that applies to us, coming up on it, certainly you.
Yeah.
Right?
You're practically part of the furniture, dude.
I wrote this opening on the playing board.
I'm, but I'm probably approaching it as well.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons I just bring it up now, we're, all of us kind of are on that annual renewal cycle, so, or the, in the year, it's a whole cycle.
I wonder if that even, I wonder if that, I'll find out, but I wonder if it applies to the alternates as well.
Yeah, I, and, and that's, yeah. We didn't go into that much detail in Long Range Planning.
Yeah, I, I will definitely look into it, I, it's news to me.
Thank you.
They keep me in the dark all the time.
Though that could be a workaround, couldn't it? You could then go back to being an alternate for a year and-
Yeah, I mean, possibly, I don't know.
Because you'd still be on the, you'd be a different position?
Exactly. I, I, I will get the, the full scoop on it. I, I would, if I can just interject too-
Sure.
-before I forget, because I'm likely to. There is a, a main municipal association training coming up, there's actually one tomorrow, but I think it's probably too late to sign up for it, but there's one on, on December tenth. If anybody wants a refresher, it's a Zoom workshop, so just let Doreen know, I think it's probably free, so.
Yeah.
You just have to register.
If it's a Zoom one, I think I might-
Yeah.
-sign up for a refresher.
Just if you want a refresher, and hear some questions being asked and whatnot.
It's not free dinner, but.
No free dinner. Just wanted to get that in before I forgot, thank you.
So, anything else, anything else from members of the committee or anything?
Just one thing, a while back, maybe about five or six meetings ago, there was some issue about one of the applicants demonstrating the neighborhood characteristics.
Mm-hmm.
And there were a number of folks who were a little annoyed that they didn't have pictures.
Mm-hmm.
And we had two applicants in front of us today, neither of whom had pictures, and the applicants who were really annoyed weren't annoyed this time around.
The second application did have a full aerial view.
But, you know, you know what I mean, to demonstrate that the houses were similar. And, and the first applicant even said that he was told he didn't need pictures, now I was surprised by that, but I don't think that would be the case.
Yeah, I, I don't think he, I don't think he meant that he was told he didn't need them. It wasn't in the literature anywhere that said it was required.
Sure, no, I'm not.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
I didn't tell for a second that he would say that.
I always tell people, whatever you present, make sure it means something.
Yeah.
So, photos definitely usually mean something.
But I'm wondering, I mean, if that is going to be something that we are asking for, we probably ought to make sure that it's part of the package. It's a simple thing to provide.
I agree, and, and, and I think, too, I could totally imagine saying, well, it wasn't in the application material to provide pictures, so, and bringing pictures along. But we could easily add that to the application, if pictures are available of similar properties in the neighborhood, the, the, the board requests that they be included with the application.
I will also add that wasn't the one that we, that, I know I was one of the people that was really up about those, and it was a, I thought it was a Higgins Beach character code one, and that would have, I wanted specific pictures, because that's a little different than just like, hey, this is kind of in conformity with the neighbor, the general feel, like the Higgins Beach has like, an actual character code, which I feel like is different, so.
And it was actually, there are two of them, one was Higgins Beach and one was in East Grand Ave, sort of Pine Point sort of area, where they were trying to build an upstairs-
And I think they were making a big deal about it, and that's why we were, like, like, they were making a big deal in those applications when they were, like, verbally saying, well, this is what everybody else is doing, so then we were like, well, show us.
Right.
Whereas, this one was just kind of like, they weren't, they kind of, but, I was just-
All I'm suggesting is that we should have a policy, it should be consistent, and it's part of the record, so, you know, we all know Scarborough to some extent, we drive around the neighborhoods, we know what the neighborhoods look like, but that's not sort of part of the record, and so, just to have it as part of the record, it probably makes sense.
Yep.
I think that they don't need to add anything personally, unless they're going to start, like, that's going to be their shtick while they're doing the application, and say that it's like everybody else, well, then, then you need to show us.
Well, no, one of the criteria is that it has to be like similar to the neighborhood, rest of the neighborhood, and, and they say, we all know Scarborough, but-
And I think describing some of the houses, like, I feel like the first person today was pretty good about describing houses in the neighborhood, and that would have been accurate enough for me.
Well, Scott, Scott Hill is a big area, right? There are two new places at the bottom that are, you know, huge, there's a couple of big houses on one side, the roads off to the other, to the right on it, aren't as well-developed, they're smaller houses, you know, they're more traditional houses. So, you know, it's a big area, and you say, in the neighborhood. I think what they really mean is, you know, houses that are adjacent, two houses away, is it similar to it, and-
Yeah.
Pictures aren't going to hurt, it's simple enough to do.
Oh, no, I, I love pictures, I love when people-
Christine, sorry, Christine was up there.
Good.
Well, for uniformity and clarity, one of the criteria is, does this house impact the neighborhood, is it different from the other houses in the neighborhood? I think we should just make a requirement in the application that they illustrate some of this by photographs.
Yeah, in, actually, David, you go first.
Okay. What we need to keep in mind is that if they can't give us evidence-
Okay.
-then it's hard for us to approve, so sometimes we got to dig it out of them like we had to tonight. And that's, that's not the way it should work, but unfortunately, that leaves us with that, that is the only option. And we can't assume that we all know Scarborough, and we should be able to relate to it, because that has nothing to do with it.
Yeah, that's right.
It has to be, what, what does the public perceive?
And, and the public gets to see what's on the record.
Exactly. So, if, if there's no evidence, okay, yes, we can help them a little bit, like we did, but it's, it, it really would help a lot if they came prepared.
I agree, and, and the other thing I think is, which is important, is this form goes back for a long time, the, the requirements of what you present for evidence go back to nineteen ninety-one, when not everybody had a phone in their, a camera in their pocket. Getting these photos is as much as, could take as much as an eight-minute drive around your neighborhood, snapping photos with your iPhone, so, so it's the, the burden that we're asking of the applicants, I think, is the minimalist, and it would help the public record, and it would help our discussion, so. I, I, I think Richard's right, and I think if we can add a sentence or ask the code enforcement officer to give guidance that photos would be appreciated, and would enhance the board's ability to expedite your, or your appeal and, and, in the fairest way possible.
Okay, so, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I do want to caution the board. I think, just take, for example, tonight's requests, was, they were pretty straightforward, and added bay to a garage. I don't think it's a big reach to, to think that there's other properties that have three bays and a garage, you, you know there are. I don't think it's a big reach they're adding on a master, I think it might be a reach if they wanted to add two or three stories on top of a house, when it's a completely residential one-story, single-family dwelling neighborhood, maybe that would be out of character, but I think, I, I just want to caution the board that should somebody come in, and again, I do my best to coach them, I don't write their application for them, but I don't think you would want to deny an otherwise good application for a reasonable request just because they didn't provide photos. I think that would be a bad precedent to set.
I agree, and, but I, I do think, I, I see what you guys are saying about saying to add photos, and that it really is minimum, however, I have patients in town that don't even have a cell phone that has a camera on it, like the old-school flip phones, or no phone, so, in that case, they could maybe say what they're a butter, like, describe ver, you know, in words, what the houses look like.
They've got, they've got building plans, and they've got surveys, and, you know, if you have the guy who's doing the building plan, take a photo, this is not a serious-
I don't think photos are, are terribly difficult, but I do think that Brian has a good point, too, that, that's-
Well, but, but, I mean, just as an example, I mean, the three-bay garage, to the best of my knowledge, on the second applicant, there are no three-bay garages in that neighborhood.
The second, they didn't, they weren't doing that.
I know, but, but we don't know that, right? I mean, if, if that house had had a three-bay garage on it, if they had proposed a three-bay garage on it, we wouldn't have known.
But, but, again, even if they did, even if there were no houses in that neighborhood that had a three-bay garage, everybody had a two-bay garage, is a third bay a deal-breaker for you? I mean, if it is-
It's a garage.
If it is, I'm moving out of Scarborough, I don't live here anyway.
No, it's, it's the record that has to be-
Exactly.
I just want to play the devil's act, I don't want you to get hung up on photos. I think the board has a great brain between it and, and the discussion, and you can, in certain cases, I don't think photos are, I think that's what I'm trying to say, in certain cases, you know, cooler heads will say, I don't need photos to say this is reasonable. So, just because photos weren't added shouldn't be a deal-breaker, if everything else is-
We, we hear your passion, Brian.
Okay. I just, I don't want any, no need to rebut that, I just want to put it out there.
I, the, I come back to, though, I think we, we as a board ultimately are putting together a package of facts and findings for the public, and it's the idea of augmenting what the public has available, not just for us, we're certainly capable, we do this once, once a month, or whenever we have things to discuss once a month, but there are members of the public who may be only looking at this one appeal of every zoning appeal they'll ever see, that may ever happen in their lifetime, and giving them access to, and this goes for other elements of the application, giving them access to the best possible application, I think is an important part of our responsibility to the public. So, so I think, and again, I don't want to make it a requirement, but I think we, we, we should, and Brian, your role is kind of shepherding people through this, guide them through the, the, the idea that this board appreciates photo, photographic evidence, particularly for things like neighborhood character. And on this one that we, the, the first one, twenty-seven sixty-three, I found it interesting, you know, I didn't have a problem with adding a, and I can't imagine anyone having a problem with adding a third garage, but if you look at the overall increase in the house size, they're bulking up that house pretty majorly. Now, I'll be honest, I do know the neighborhood, I, I think what they represented about Scott Hill, Scott Hill Road area, the two-rod road area, was entirely correct, they represented to it verbally, I didn't need further, further things, but if somebody from the public had said, I'm concerned with the massing of this relative to other things, then, then we would have found photographs very helpful of other similarly-sized photographs in, of similarly-sized homes in the neighborhood, that would have allowed us to say, no, actually, we've got hard evidence, not just anecdotal, that says that this house is within keeping the, of the character of the neighborhood. So, I like it, I think it, it augments it without providing a, creating an undue burden in the future for applicants, or putting us in a position where we're going to use a technicality to reject an, an otherwise, an otherwise worthy desire for an appeal. So, so Brian, I, and again, I, I hear your passion on this one, I'd ask you to trust us that we will not abuse this, this request. I don't think we, we generally have abused the, the, the right that we have as a board to ask for further information from our app, appellants, and I think in general, we've established a pretty good track record. So, if we could add that request of applicants to, to the future, I think that would be helpful. David?
I'd like to respectfully disagree, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I don't think photographs should be a requirement at all.
I didn't say they should be a requirement.
I, you sure sounded that way.
I said it was a request.
A request, well, I think the request should really be, you know, on the, on the part of Brian, is you've got to be able to make your case, you need to present, present information, some kind of documentation, which could include blah, 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 it could be photographs, it could be just being able to tell us, you know, I surveyed the neighborhood, here's what's there, it's, it's, so they have to be able to, to present facts to us in order for us to be able to rule in their favor. At the same time, if they're not prepared, look, we have responsibilities to try to help them.
Yeah.
And, and I've always tried to function in that way, and will continue to do so. You know, our, our job is not to deny, although when I first, you know, served on a different board, not here, I was told by a city councillor that you're going to have to say no a lot. I'm afraid, no, I, I've got to disagree, I've been on three different boards now, and that's not our role, you know, our role is to help people to be able to get what they want and need within reason, you know, it has to be within the law, and that's it, and we, we can certainly help them along the way. You know, Brian does a terrific job preparing applicants-
Yeah.
-and we should do the rest of it when they come here.
Can I, can I chime in brief? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, I, you know, I just think generally, when we make factual findings, the more support, the, the beefier the record that we have to support those findings, the better. I don't, in the time that I've been an alternate, we haven't had any of our decisions that have come under legal attack, but when that happens, it's good to have some evidence in the record to support our factual findings. So, you know, photographs, anything like that, I mean, in a lot of cases, we're just relying on the applicant say-so, and that's obviously record evidence, but for things where it would be very low-cost to provide additional record evidence, like the character of the neighborhood, I think that would, that can only help.
Yeah. The other thing, and, and I think this, from, in my mind, really does come down to the character of the neighborhood item that we have on this one, the, the, the facts and circumstances of the actual piece of property and the lot are, generally speaking, are what they are. We're not here to make subjective determinations on that, when we receive the facts, validate them, and do that, but one of the areas of subjective validation that we do- But one of the areas of subjective validation that we do is this notion of this, and this is also where the whole, where we've had questions about foot, uh, photographs, um, in the, in the record in the past. Where somebody, might be Higgins Beach, might be Pine Point, um, it might be just an R2 district that somebody object, uh, the butter objects to. I would say though, that generally speaking, we get some advance warning that that's gonna come up as an issue. Um, as, and, and, and Brian, as you work with applicants, you're, you're, in advance of this meeting, you probably will be aware of a butter or a public comment that's going to throw the yellow flag on character of neighborhood. And for those applications, yeah, we, we, we are at a bit of a disadvantage if we have to conceptually or purely verbally talk about what the neighborhood is like and what, what equivalent structures in the neighborhood are like. Um, so it's, it really is in the applicant's best interest in those circumstances to, to have that, that record ready to, ready to go.
It, it strikes me that it's, from personal experience, it's an awful lot easier to take five pictures of my neighborhood than it is for me to find the deed to my house. But I have to, but I have to present the deed to the house.
Right.
Right? I mean, this is, let's put it in perspective, really. I mean, this is not an onerous requirement that we're imposing on any applicant. Um, you know, and, and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that they provide that for precisely the reasons Peter mentioned and also Kyle. If it were something that I thought would take longer than five minutes of an applicant's time, I'd be hesitant to impose it on them, but this is a trivial, trivial thing to ask of an applicant.
And also, the other thing I'd say too is, I don't think this board, or even any future board, would ever use some inadequacy on this part to, um, to, to pull a gotcha on an applicant. Um, what we're trying to do here is give applicants ahead of time the best possible advice on constructing the best possible appeal so that our job both is ea, hopefully our job is easy, but also that the, that the public sees it has absolutely no avenue to challenge that we've made the right decision. So, um, again, I, I, I didn't mean to be misinterpreted. I'm not asking this as a requirement. What I'm asking, um, Brian to do is, you know, you, you, you can see him coming. You're, you're really good at this. And when you see it coming, there's, there's that person who's gonna be talking about the character of the neighborhood or, or the, or the rest. A great suggestion to that applicant would be, be ready with some pictures.
Well, Brian's retiring.
Yeah, Brian's gonna not be here forever either is the problem with this whole thing.
What, what is, I'm just, what is the problem of having it be a requirement?
I don't think it's that big of a problem, except for my issue is when we're looking at like Higgins Beach applications and it says, character of the neighborhood versus this particular, um, limited reduction yard size. It's, it says the neighborhood will not be substantially different from, from the rest of the neighborhood, basically. And that is super vague to me versus character of the neighborhood. I feel like those are two different, different.
And it's totally discounting the value of being unique. I mean, do we want cookie cutter? Does everything have to be the same?
I mean, I think it's so easy to demonstrate that it's not substantially different. Like that wording, it almost, that does not require pictures, in my opinion.
Does the board?
How do you know what the neighborhood looked like without pictures?
Does the board want to see prompts under, under these standards, like in parentheses, please provide photos? Do you want me to add that to the?
Please provide photos would be perfect.
I, I would, I'm, I move that we have a prompt that said, please provide a photo to, in response to the, your response to question three.
Well, at least that way, it's not on me to remember to tell them to bring photos because the board won't believe them when they say.
Yeah, I, I second that motion.
But I just want to add one thing. Don't, don't, don't tell me I'm doing a great job. I completely missed that one applicant did not fill in one of those things. Completely blew by it, and that's on me, and I apologize to the board.
It's on the applicant.
So we'll add another prompt on item three. Remember to fill this one in. So that's, that's okay. Um, but I, I, I think we've, we've got a motion in a second to add a prompt, um, to invite applicants to, uh, to, to bring photographic evidence to the table, among other items. Uh, should I see a show of hands who is in favor of that? We've got three, not in favor. We've got two. The motion passes. If we could, uh, just mock up that with, with a prompt.
Photos preferred.
Yeah, that's all we need. Great.
Good interpretation.
That's all we need.
The, the other thing that helps though, is when we get the, I forget what it's called, but the plot plans of the neighboring properties, so that we have a relative, we can see, oh, that house is 4,000 square feet, that one's 8,000 square feet, they're only asking for three. I mean, just so we have some idea of what's going on in that neighborhood.
There's a lot of ways that we can show, that they can show.
Yeah, it's not just photos.
Yeah, it's not just photos, but, which is why I didn't want to require photos, but I think prompting them to, because photographic evidence is, is powerful.
It's not unreasonable either, but.
Without, without question, we, it's almost 8:15. My God, we've gone so long today. So, um, in any event, um, thank you to everyone. Um, anyone who's still listening out there, please remember to vote. Um, it's important that it's now, uh, early voting is allowed, but everybody should be voting in town. And, um.
Out of the state now.
Exactly. And, um, our next meeting is?
November 30th.
November. So we'll see everybody next month.
I am flying back from Tampa that day. I may or may not be here.
Gotcha.
We'll be all right.
I will try my best, but Florida be Florida right now.
Yeah. Good luck. Um, okay, if.
Said that on record, and I shouldn't have.
Uh, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second, David. Uh, all in favor, clearly. Meeting is adjourned.